Good morning, Tony. I think we have quorum. So when you're ready to start, we are ready to go.
Sam, the first thing I want to do is we want to add an item and move an item.
Okay. Should we do roll call first and then do it?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, all right. So I'll do roll call quickly. Chester Sidney Lignar, I think I saw you. Yep, good morning. Clint Clinton, Michelle Bienni Vega, Venna. I'm going to have to get used to saying their name. I don't see her, but she is expected. Cromwell Anthony Stopatour.
Here.
Deep River Carol Doge Jones.
Here. Good morning.
Durham Brendan Ray. He is here. I did see him. Yep, he's up there. East Hattam Irene Haynes.
I see her, raise your hand.
Yep, she is here. East Hampton David Cox. I don't see him yet, but he, so we actually don't know if he's attending or not. Essex, Norm Meedleman or Carrie Duquesne? Oh, I see Carrie.
Carrie, good morning.
Good morning. Hattam Robert McGarry. Welcome. Killingworth Eric Couture.
Here.
Lime David Long.
Here.
Middlefield Bobby Amortino or Jim Irish? I'm not, I don't know if they're expected or not, but I don't see them. Middletown Ben Florsheim. I don't see him. All right, old lime Martha Schumaker, are you here? Oh, there you are. Good morning Martha. Old Sabre Carl Fortuna.
Here.
Welcome. Portland Ryan Curly.
Good morning.
Good morning. Westbrook John Hall.
Good morning.
There you are. And then for the MPO Darlene Briggs from the Millsack Chamber. I think I saw you. Yes, there you are. And also we have Joe Commerford, the SRA Transit District. I'm not sure if he's here yet. Is Brendan, is Brendan here in case?
Yeah.
Okay, neither. Okay. And then I'll introduce our guests. We have Owen McClure from Connecticut DOT. Welcome. We also have, we also have Catherine Russell from Deep River and Carol Conklin, our regional election monitor. From our congressional offices, we have Ellen Graham from Blumenthal's office. Let's see who else I see. Brianna Horton, remind me where you are from.
I'm Senator Martha Marks's office.
Oh, Martha Marks. Yeah, yeah, welcome.
See Karen.
Oh, we have Erin McRide from Senator Murphy's office. And who else do we have?
Julia.
Oh, Julia McGrath from Representative Courtney's office. And I'm just look quickly looking down the list to see if anyone else needs to be introduced. Then we also have staff in the room here at River Cog. We have Eliza Lo Presti, Janice Oldmeyer, Kevin Armstrong and myself Sam Gold. We also have Susie Beckman joining us, Megan Juflis, Rob Harramit, Marcos Gonzalez, Margot Burns should be joining us by phone. And that might be everyone. If I missed anyone, my apologies and please feel free to introduce yourself. Okay, with that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, so we're going to add. Let's see here. We're going to move State Roadway mowing up before public speaking as we do have a presenter for that. And so that's State Roadway mowing will be three B Sam?
Yeah, so it's going to go from three B up to one A. Yeah, two A. Yep.
Okay, and the regional election advisor will be two B. Then we're going to add. We're going to add the authority for the executive director to sign the Regional Waste Authority grant. We're going to make that four A and move all the other letters down one by one. So if I can get a motion on those two, I would appreciate it.
I think Irene made the motion.
Yep, so moved.
Irene, and do I have a second?
I'll second it.
And that's Eric Killingworth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, first thing, public speaking is roadside.
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Yeah, so we got, yeah, DOT isn't it? Yep.
Right. Roadside mowing. Go ahead, Sam, want to introduce our guests?
Sure. So at the last cog meeting, there was a number of questions from the CEOs about roadside mowing and maintenance of state rights away and the interaction between the town and the state and when things need to be mowed or cleared for safety reasons. There was concerns in a number of our towns and so Grayson Wright, our DOT liaison, who actually sends his regrets, he was, he had a conflict today and was able to make it. He told me that it'd be best to invite someone from our maintenance district to come be available for questions and concerns. So Owen, welcome to our meeting and I don't know if you want to give any sort of this overview about your your mowing and maintenance operations in the district.
Sure. You can hear me, right?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, perfect. All right. My name is Owen McClure. I'm the District Two Maintenance Director, so I cover most of your towns. I think with the exception of Cromwell, Middletown, Middlefield and Durham, I cover all of your towns. So I oversee fifty-two towns in Eastern Connecticut. All the maintenance, anything to do with the roadway, the right-of-way, signs, lines, paving, snowplow removal, mowing, you name it, anything that falls under maintenance or what a public works would do. So we, in Eastern Connecticut, like I said, that includes most of your towns. We have twelve maintenance facilities. We cover about eighteen hundred miles of state road. And probably just like everyone, we're having the struggles of, you know, hiring people, retaining people and getting the skill level of people to be able to do these maintenance type jobs that, you know, we all struggle to do. So kind of our mowing policy is, you know, we mow our roads back. We try to twice a year sometime in the middle of the season and then at the end of the season in October. I know everyone assumes that we're doing it for safety reasons and it's not a hundred percent for safety reasons. It's for erosion control, so our sides of our roads don't wash out. And obviously, just like you guys, we all get our constituents to say it's a safety concern when a road is mowed. But the main reason is for the erosion control. And the state statute, which I'm sure Grayson has brought up and you guys are all aware of, any private driver, any town road intersecting with a state road, that property owner is responsible for the sightline coming out of their driveway. And they're obviously, just like with you guys, there's exceptions to everything. You know, if there's a bad curved area and it's got a guide rail and we have a driveway coming out and we're not expecting someone to stand out in the middle of the lane and mow in front of their piece of property, we will maintain that. So I'm sure you guys do the exact same thing in your towns. I'm definitely open for questions. In your area, I will say, we have two supervisors, one out of the Old Sabre facility and then one out of the Hattam facility and both of those supervisors are, I mean, they're top-notch. They've got a lot of experience with the state. Over in the area, I can definitely say it's a very affluent part of the state and these guys understand that and they, there is a higher priority for that river valley of where, you know, we do maintain. If there's specific concerns, I'm definitely open to, you know, having a conversation offline or, you know, getting an email from any one of you to help mitigate any type of problems with the sightlines that we're lacking. On state, on state roads, we are a hundred percent responsible for those sightlines. So if you have like a, you know, Route 154 and Route 1 intersecting, that is a hundred percent on the state. We're not asking the town to do that. But if, I don't know if a little bit of that helps or makes it any worse, but definitely here to, you know, hear some concerns or field some questions. I know a lot of you, I've dealt with a lot of you for the last four years. Some of you are new to this, you know, to this process, but we can definitely work together. I've sat down with a couple of you at your offices and gone over some of our future plans, future projects. You know, what we're spending in this area. Rumble strips, you name it, signs, anything to help the safety of the public and all of our constituents. We're definitely here to listen and if we have the means to do it, we will definitely do it. So I want to open it up to a couple of questions. I have about ten minutes left. I got to jump on another meeting. So that's why they bumped me up to the beginning here. I appreciate that. So.
So do we have any questions for Mr. McClure? Irene?
So thank you for being here. And just for clarification again, if there's a state road, I'm from East Hattam and we have many state roads in East Hattam. Again, a state road intersects a town road, those sightlines on the state road is up to the town to take care of.
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
Ms. Jones? You're muted. Do you have a question?
Was that me?
Yes.
Yeah, I had a question. So thank you again for being here as well. So we have called Tylerville on a few occasions for sightline issues. We have Route 154 runs through our town, Route 80. And I just wondered, what is a reasonable amount of time to give them to respond? I mean, we hate to kind of keep bugging them, figuring every other town is calling. But what's the reasonableness, you know, factor?
On a mowing complete, if it's coming out of a town road or a private driveway, there's, like I said at the beginning, we're going to mow those areas twice a year. So if they call in, you know, late May, that area may not get mowed until July. And if they call in September, it may not be mowed until the end of the season. And that's all we require to be mowed on the roads. But if there's, if there's a safety concern, like I said, we have a curve in the road and there's exceptions to a lot of things that we talk about when we say we, you know, we're going to do it twice a year. If there is an absolute safety concern, then that needs to be brought to the supervisor, which in Tylerville, Ray Segretto is the supervisor and in Old Sabre, it's JD Antonio and they're very responsive in both of your areas. If it's brought to like, hey Ray, Jay, this is a priority, we feel it's a safety concern, they're going to probably drop what they're doing, check it out and get a crew out there right away. And if they're not, that, I mean, there is a manager in between myself and the supervisors, but honestly, if it's, you guys are being kicked to the curb for six weeks and you know it's a safety concern, or I'm not just saying six weeks, but you're being pushed off, email me and it'll be done as long as we feel that it's a priority. Because we don't like being like firemen either. Every time the phone rings and same with you guys, you don't want to, you know, do that to your public works directors either. We don't want to just keep, hey, the alarm's here, go there. And it's not, you know, I mean, you guys know the towns, our supervisors are, you know, well in tune with your towns and the safety concerns and the priorities. So if, you know, if a constituent is reaching out to that facility, it's just, you know, I mean, I hate to say it's just a constituent. If it comes from one of your offices, it's looked at a little bit different. That you guys have raised it to that bar and we will definitely, you know, get the resources over there to take care of the problem.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, I just have a quick question about how the state handles signage. So meaning like temporary signage on state roads. I didn't know if, when you're out there, if you just pull them and take them with you or you only take, you know, signs that you've received complaints about or if you don't touch them at all.
So, so what you're saying, like illegal encroachment signs, signs that are placed without permission of the DOT in the right-of-way?
Correct. And more temporary, like, you know, lawn mowing or they advertising signs.
Yeah, if it's, so the way we kind of look at it, if it's in someone's front yard and we're not going and taking it. If it's in an area where our mowers got to go mow, then we're going to take this side. If we get a complaint, then we're going to investigate it. I have encroachment permit agents, there's, there's five of them for this part of the state, for the fifty-two towns. And they would go out and investigate it. You know, if somebody, a lot of people just don't know what is the right-of-way. You have some people that they don't really care what the right-of-way is and they mow right to the curb line. There's some people that are like, I'm not mowing down there. It's too close to the state road. It's the same thing with the signs. They don't know exactly where that line is. And, you know, I know when we get into political season, we kind of try and do the same thing. If it's on a state-on-state intersection and there's a big four-by-eight sheet of plywood with somebody's name on it, we're most likely removing that. If it's in someone's front yard and it's five feet off the edge of the road and it says Owen McClure is running for reelection, they're instructed not to touch that.
Anyone else? No one else that I can see? Am I correct? Okay, thank you very much. Very informative and.
I could also give, I could give you guys my email. So my email is my first name, which is spell it E O I N dot McClure at ct.gov. Even if you want to just send me an email, hey, how's it going? I, you know, I listened to you on the meeting today. I'm the first selectman for, from so-and-so. I'd love to sit down and meet with you and I'll come with one of my planning managers and we could talk about different projects. I've already done that with a couple of people. So we're definitely, you know, our commissioner, the governor's office want to, want to keep a great relationship with your offices and sometimes you guys feel like you're the last to know of a project coming in your, your town. We're definitely want to make you aware of what's going on and, you know, so you're not planning other stuff that we're looking to do. Every, it's around the end of December, beginning of January, we send letters out to all the towns coming from my office. And it states what paving projects it, that our maintenance people are going to be doing. And for this, for Eastern Connecticut, we get about thirty million dollars in paving. So we try and get that word out so we can kind of, and that's not finalized till that December, January timeframe of that upcoming year. A lot of people don't pay attention to that letter because in the letter, it talks about your, when we pave the road and your utility is coming back to grade. So it kind of updates how the process, how to do that. But at the end of the letter, it does list all those roads that are going to be paved that year. If any, you're looking for like a list of what roads we're going to re-strike, we can definitely provide that to you. It's, we do it, you know, try to do it on a two-year process of what we're planning to do. We can expedite something. I can move stuff around if that's something in your town, you're, hey, you want to, I don't want you doing 154. I'd rather have you do 148. We can talk with you as long as we know ahead of time. My office controls all that. So if we have those open lines of communication, it definitely, then you're not fielding stuff. I don't know what the state's doing or I don't know why they paved that road and not that road. We can kind of answer all those questions for you guys so you can deal with your constituents. One other thing I have is if constituents do reach out to you about something with the DOT, we have a customer care center that is excellent. And they, we, we send everyone to our DOT customer care and we have people in Newington, real life people, and they either field the calls, the emails, and they disseminate them to the proper crews so we can, you know, return a phone call to the people. So instead of every single constituent that would complain, you guys hand them over to my email. Give them our DOT customer care, which it's on our website. Most people do have it. And they're very responsive with that and I hope that helps.
Thank you. Irene?
Yeah, I just thought of another question now that you've, you started talking about that. With the new roads that you're coming through and doing the paving, are you relining them with bike paths now? Automatically or is that something that we have to discuss with you first?
So the towns are reaching out to our traffic division and they, they are doing the communication with that. So prior to any of those pavings, paving jobs, our traffic, so which is DOT traffic at ct.org, they will communicate. And if they're not communicating that, you need to let me know. So Bike Pass, Rumble Strips are our commissioner and the governor are huge on that. I know people don't want Rumble Strips, but our new Rumble Strips are excellent. And if you guys send me an email, if you want to go check out the newest ones, the driver hears them and the public does it. So we've, we've come a long way with that. People get used to, you know, it sounds like a machine gun in my backyard. The new ones are completely different. And there's a huge push from the feds to get these in everywhere we can. I know there's resistance out there, but we're still going to be pushing to get them out there. So just communicate that with me. If there's, if you guys have, I mean, if you guys have issues with DOT traffic, it's a huge part of the DOT, let me know. I'll make a call. I'll make sure you get an answer.
Excuse me, but on 156 in Lime, this is David Long from Lime and thank you for attending our meeting. But on 156 in Lime, you repaved, you put down these marvelous lines that have a built-in rumble strip that made a zipping sound when your tire crossed it. And then three months later, you came in and put these god-awful holes in the road that sounds like a machine gun, even though we asked you not to. What, you say you've got something new. You had something new and then you went back to the old, you know, cratering the road. What's the new?
The new is, is the quieter rumble strips. So if you want to send me an email, I'll, we'll look into it right away and get you an answer. I'm not, I don't know the specifics where exactly where, where you're talking about. But I know we just did a huge paving job out there, but let me know the specifics and we'll get you an answer on it.
Um, not to put you on the spot, but since there is a number of us in District One, you wouldn't happen to have the contact information in name for the District One representative, would you?
Yep, we're very good friends. It's Barry dot Julian. J U L I A N at ct.gov.
And.
You, you can let him know that Owen gave you his email, so.
And Owen, if you're at your computer, if you don't mind typing that in the chat. And Tony, I see Kevin Tedesco from Connecticut DOT has his hand raised.
Kevin?
Hey, thanks everybody. I just wanted to jump in real quick as Owen was talking about the the district offices. So we, our office sent out a bunch of emails to all of the elected officials. And in that letter has our contact info, it has your specific district, you know, who you would contact for, you know, construction, maintenance, all of those folks are outlined. If anybody needs that again, you know, Grayson, Grayson Wright is, actually he was out. So it might either be Jane Dunbar or Grayson Wright who sent those out, but we can send them again if anybody needs those. We were trying to send them out to be helpful. So you know who to contact at, you know, both internally at DOT and the district.
So maybe Kevin, not to put you on the spot, you could give us to Sam District One's info as well as District Two's info and we can put it in the minutes maybe if that's all right with you.
Yeah, yeah, I can do that.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for our DOT representatives? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much. We appreciate the information and all the assistance that is provided to us by Department of Transportation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Is Carol with us?
Yes.
Carol, you're up. Morning.
Good morning. So speaking of all those election signs that get moved, our priority right now in the registrar's world is the primary August thirteenth. This primary, of course, early voting is still a new function for everybody. It was a four-day sort of trial run at the Presidential Preference Primary. This, this early voting session is seven days, August fifth through August eleventh. The registrars do have the hours, the hours should be posted, you know, via Town Clerk, Registrar's Town Website. The state, since the Presidential Preference Primary, has done multiple follow-up calls with the registrars, statewide calls, soliciting, feedback, tweaking, making some changes. There actually was a call yesterday too. And one thing that came out of yesterday's call is one of the big concerns has been getting enough workers. And that would be, you know, for now and for November, which is a fourteen-day session. And the state has partnered with Connecticut Realtors and Connecticut Veterans. And the state right now has compiled a list of seven hundred people across the state willing to be poll workers. Poll worker does not have to be from your town. And they're sending that out to all the registrars. So if you're hearing about shortages, please tell your registrars to tap into that list. There's seven hundred folks on it. And again, they don't have to be from your town and there's, and you can also tap into your unaffiliated population in your town. A lot of people are very party oriented, go back to their town shares, I need workers. But truthfully, in most of our towns, your unaffiliated population is your largest population and they can be poll workers. So I just wanted to pass that along. It's been an important topic. And the other thing happening with this session is when the first four-day session happened, a lot of small registrar's office like in our cog did manually process their early voting ballots, you know, hand open, hand count. For this one, for the seven days, a lot of them are now starting to purchase scanners and go through the scanner process because it's going to get heavier. It's going to get heavier during the fourteen day. And having that scanner barcode process on your early voting ballots is going to be quicker and more accurate. So if they've approached you or it's been in their budget, I just want you to understand what exactly it's for and what's happening. And other than that, they will be, they have another call on Monday with the state. We'll be going over some different things from this legislative session that is tweaking early voting. That call is Monday at eleven. And from there, we will just continue to monitor and check in. Several new towns are having changeovers in registrars, so I am reaching out and talking to them and trying to set up meetings with them. And anyways, any, anytime there's questions, please email me.
Carol, I think I asked you this before, maybe I didn't. The requirement on the camera on the, on the ballot box, what, when does that have to be done by?
The camera on the ballot box?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't remember you asking that, Tony, but I will double check to that and get back to you.
That, that was passed this past session, correct?
I think so. And that's what the Monday at eleven call is to go over the session. I think so. And that's what the Monday at eleven, uh, call is to go over the session.
Okay, if if, um, if I am correct, and I think I am, that that cameras are required on the, uh, external ballot boxes at our municipalities. Uh, could you get that out to Sam so he could get it out to all the CEOs?
Um. Yeah.
Uh, on the date and when we have to have them installed.
Yes, I will absolutely do that.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any questions for Carol? Okay, thank you, Carol. Uh, let's go to. Excuse me? Oh, thank you. Um, how about Senator Murphy's office?
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, not too much to report here. We're getting ready to head to August recess. Um, if you guys have any questions, um, feel free to reach out to me directly. We should be sending out an email updates and with different federal funding opportunities, as well as some updates on Senator Murphy's work in the state and in D C. Um, and if you have any questions about congressional directed spending and where your project is at in the process, um, just reach out to me and I'll do my best to connect you with the appropriate stuff um, in our office and Senator Blumenthal's to ensure we give you an update. But by now, you should be getting emails from, um, our team regarding where your application or project is at in the process. Because now it's in the hands of the Appropriations Committee. So, um, any questions, just reach out to me directly and, uh, happy to help.
Thank you. Um, any questions? Senator Blumenthal's office, is there a rep? Yes, I see one. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Good morning. Um, so Erin really touched on what I wanted to do about the, um, congressionally directed spending. Um, also, the senators, um, COSA bill, the Kids Online Safety Act, looks like it's going to be passing this week. We're very excited. Um, and oh, and so, yes, the senator will be around in August. So if there are any events or meetings or, um, anything you think he should know about, please, um, reach out to me. He's going to have a lot of time to fill, so, thank you.
Oh, I thought he was doing an investigation. I didn't think he had any time.
Always has time to do everything.
Representative, uh, Courtney's office, please. Julia?
Morning. So, um, my biggest thing today is on August eighth at Eastern Connecticut State University, the congressman is holding a federal funding resource fair. Um, it will be taking place from, uh, ten A M to two P M. Uh, the congressman will give remarks, um, at the beginning at ten A M. However, you are welcome to come in and out as your schedule allows, um, and, you know, access the resources that make the most sense for you. There will be, um, uh, funding resources for municipalities and cogs, small businesses, agricultural producers, um, nonprofits, arts and culture, and humanities institutions, veteran service organizations, kind, we're trying to make it as, um, uh, wraparound as possible. Um, and, um, I will also be there with some information on, um, the, uh, house side community project, uh, funding process, as well as kind of your basic resources for grant seekers of obtaining a U E I, setting up your SAM.gov registration and things of the like. Um, again, that will be at ten A M, um, and until two P M, we will have snacks. That's always exciting. Um, and, um, there, uh, yeah, again, you can float in and out as you, um, so wish. Um, there is a link in my report that I sent to Eliza to register. However, you will also probably see one hundred thousand emails from me between now and then, which will also have the flyer and full, um, event information and the link. Um, and if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me on that one. Um, other than that, we have a couple, um, we heard back about, um, a couple of exciting, uh, climate pollution reduction grants, two of which involve Connecticut Deep, one, um, of which Connecticut Deep is the lead for New England on. Um, they will be using the funding to start a heat pump accelerator program to make, um, basically, heat pumps more accessible to households that want to take advantage of a lot of those I R A, uh, rebates and tax credits. Um, and the other is, um, led by New Jersey. It's called the Clean, uh, Quarter Coalition. Um, it's used, it it will be used to deploy electric vehicle charging infrastructure along ninety-five for medium and heavy duty vehicles. Um, that's something that's been a real gap in that deployment, um, so far. So that's exciting. Um, not not just in Connecticut, nationally, that's been, um, kind of an area that needed a little bit more attention. Um, other than that, um, the congressman last week had, um, the deputy secretary, secretary, there we go, of USDA, visit a couple of farms, one in Killingworth and the other in, um, Lime, Old Lime, sorry. Um, which, uh, we got wonderful feedback on. The whole, um, secretary's team was very impressed with, um, uh, the visits and the community partners that they met. Um, and I think that's going to be it from us for today. There's a few grant, um, programs in my, and webinars that I think would be interesting in my report, but that's it for me.
Thank you. Any questions for the congressional offices? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, nothing else in public speaking, correct, Sam?
Um, we'll just ask, is there anyone else from the public who'd like to address the council? Uh, Mr. Chair, I don't see anyone identifying themselves.
Okay, then we'll do, uh, M P O business. And, uh, the first thing up will be the approval of the minutes from June twenty-sixth. Can I please get a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second. Uh, any corrections? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I have to abstain, wasn't there, Cindy? Abstain, wasn't present.
Duly noted. Thank you. Okay, uh, moving on to the tip amendments, Rob. Uh, would you go ahead, please?
I'm sure, yeah, I have, uh, one tip amendment, uh, three separate line items. Uh, this amendment is for, uh, uh, signal detection upgrades at various signals in the New Haven urbanized area. Basically, what this project does is replace, uh, the in pavement loop detectors with three hundred and sixty degrees stop bar cameras, as well as the LeMazone radar detectors. This is, uh, basically to help reduce delay and emissions. Um, if you're familiar with how the in-loop detectors work, it's basically just a coil, a metal coil cut under the pavement, uh, when a vehicle's there, it's magnetic, so it senses the vehicle, sends the, sends that information to the computer, which runs the, uh, you know, the signal timing. When they fail, instead of going silent, they typically, uh, show a car there all the time. Therefore, if there's no car there, the s- the signal will cycle through all its phases. Uh, this eliminates that by just having the, uh, real-time cameras out there, sending a direct, uh, information to the signal to keep, uh, keep more green time out there. Uh, there's three line items. Uh, this is a New Haven urbanized area, Project One Seventy Thirty Seven Forty-two, uses carbon reduction program funding. Uh, there's a preliminary, uh, P D phase in twenty twenty-four for four hundred and twenty-one thousand, a final design phase in F Y I, which would be twenty-five for a hundred and eighty thousand, and a construction phase in F Y I for five point three million on twenty-six, and these are all, uh, eighty, eighty-twenty federal state funding.
Without objection, I'll take, uh, a motion to approve, uh, C one, two, and three.
So moved.
Dave, Irene, any further discussion on these, uh, amendments? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, other transportation, Rob?
Uh, not a whole lot, but I can be really quick. Under the, uh, active transportation micro grants, we had four applications in the second quarter. Uh, Paula should be probably getting the, uh, the, uh, funding out to the applicants fairly soon. For the, uh, loop study, we're currently working on, uh, mapping and preferred alignments. Uh, for S S four A, uh, working on public engagement, got some draft website, draft mapping, um, data collection, uh, base mapping, things like that. We have our, uh, first advisory committee meeting next Friday. Uh, for the twenty-five tip, uh, let's see here, all the tips have been endorsed, the state's tip's been endorsed. We're just waiting on federal approval. Once that occurs, we will move from the twenty-one tip to the twenty-five tip. Uh, one last thing that's not on there, um, I was going to talk to, uh, Census Gatto, which is a Swedish company that is is involved with, uh, the automatic, uh, traffic enforcement safety devices, um, just so I can learn more about them. Um, if anyone's interested, I mean, they can send that quick, uh, it'll be probably a quick half hour meeting. So they can talk about some of their products that they have, if any of one, if anyone's interested as the L T A or police chiefs who might, might be involved with that.
Okay, thanks, Rob. Any questions for Rob? Appreciate it, Rob. Thank you. Um, let's see here. Uh, Transit District, is Joe with us?
Yes, he is.
Joe?
Here. Uh, Ron, and Brendan's off this week, so. So I'll start with, you last, at the end of May, we launched our Sunday Saturday night service. Uh, we've been very happy to see that in just one month, probably, uh, that's almost two months now. Um, we already see that some days we're getting close to Saturday around ship members. So it shows there really was a, a demand there. I'm sure that will continue to grow as people to adjust their schedules, change their work habits, you know, now that they can get to their jobs on Sunday, which they couldn't before. On Saturday nights are about equal to weeknights, so even that has has picked up, you know, it it all gets, you know, quicker even than we expected. Um, there are, we also launched several extra mile pilots, uh, East Hampton's starting slow. Uh, but, you know, I think, I think we'll continue to see that grow. It's kind of not, not too everything we expected. Uh, but Massy Gopher is growing really fast, uh, eight days. I've seen what we saw on Old Sabre where we were already, uh, close to forty trips a day. And that's only, yeah, less than two months. So we're happy with those numbers. Middletown starts, uh, at the beginning of the Wesley School Week, so we're out of four service then. We also just found out in the state that we got, we got the funding to expand service on our Old Sabre to Middletown routes. That impacts Old Sabre, Essex, Deep River, Adam, Middletown, uh, will be, we'll start running on Sun Saturdays. We're looking at probably around January, beginning of that. So another great news, uh, more expansion. It's been a year of expansion, but a lot, but but we're happy to put new service out to the public. Uh, we also had East Hampton officially join the district last month, so thanks, David. We're up to thirteen towns now. Almost, almost done with where, uh, fully implementing the study. Uh, it started in twenty eighteen. Um, so it's moving along. And then finally, I I don't know if we've mentioned before, the Tappan Rite pilot that we're doing with the state of Connecticut. I don't think we did. Um, so the state got a smart grant from U S D O T, and they chose us to pilot location to do what we call open payment technology. Maybe you've been to New York City recently and ran the subway or bus. And you know, you can now tap your credit card and not have to buy a pass anymore. You just have to go buy the MetroCard, not to do that anymore. And so that's what we're going to be piloting. We're going to have a reader on every one of our fixed route buses. And then they're also going to do it in the Marion Division of C T Transit. Now we're going to test out moving, uh, having, so people can move between systems, and then it works, you know, across different systems with the hopes that eventually that this works and we can deploy it statewide. And people will no longer need to buy a bus pass anymore. They can use their credit card. And we'll have fare capping technology in it where, uh, if you tap once, you get, you pay a dollar seventy-five, you get two-hour pass. You tap that credit card again in two hours, you don't pay again. If you tap twice, you pay three fifty total, and you'll have a day pass and the rest of your day is free. And if you tap up to the cost of a monthly pass, you'll get a monthly pass, and and you won't pay the rest of that thirty-day period. So it replaces needing a fare meter. We also have all of our old beer, we're still take cash, we'll still do all those things. It gives one more method. It makes it a little easier for people to use a bus and and take, take credit card payments right on the bus. And we're going to be a statewide pilot, so we're excited to be participating in that, and that should be getting installed next month and should launch early September. And that's all I have.
Any questions, uh, for Joe? Thank you very much, Joe. Appreciate it. Uh, moving on, uh, uh, cog business. And now we'll do, uh, the one we added, which is the, uh, Regional Waste Authority Grant and authorization to allow our executive director to, uh, sign the grant. Uh, Sam, you want to explain it?
Uh, sure. Um, so, uh, River Cog submitted a grant application to Deep, uh, last year uh, for a grant, uh, to look into setting up a regional waste authority. Uh, this, uh, this, this is a statewide program that's coming out of the dissolution of Mira, uh, which is, uh, which formerly was a, a pretty much a statewide, uh, waste authority. Um, uh, River Cog, uh, put in a, put in a grant application with a few different tasks. Um, the primary tasks were, um, uh, doing the work of inventorying and doing an assessment of what a regional waste authority could provide our member towns uh, based on, um, the solid waste, uh, and recycling that we have, but also future opportunities there might be for, uh, for greater collection, let's say of organics or, uh, future, um, uh, 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 producer responsibility items like, uh, that that may come down the road. Um, there was another element that was the legal portion, to figure out how you legally set up everything and create those, uh, those, uh, those resolutions and those bylaws and figure out any contractual issues that there may be. Um, and and also as part of, um, as part of this, um, we were going to, uh, in our scope, we were going to look into uh, whether you, whether it's beneficial to set up a new regional authority, join an existing waste authority such as Ekra and Middletown, uh, or, uh, or maybe a different solution um, that doesn't involve a waste authority such as, uh, a town, you know, deciding it wanted to take on that responsibility and contract directly with towns. Um, uh, the next, the the other phase is, um, is the Mira facility in Essex. Um, about ten towns send their waste to that facility on Dump Road, um, off of Route Nine. And, uh, and with Mira's dissolution, that facility is on town land in Essex. So, um, so, uh, First Lake Menedalman is working on, um, negotiating with Deep and Mira as to what what's happening there. Uh, we did put money in the, in the scope for a engineering assessment of that facility so the town of Essex would know what they're getting, uh, what what, you know, investments, capital, uh, capital plan is necessary for that facility, but also, uh, money to do an operational assessment by an independent, um, expert to ensure that's being operated appropriately. Um, um, and, um, we've gotten somewhat held up because, uh, the town of Essex is still working out what it wants to do in regard to that Mira facility. Um, but the other tasks don't need to be held up, uh, because of that. Um, we can still do the regional's assessment of waste and and actually get, uh, uh, get a study that actually makes a recommendation of the pros and cons of setting up of of how to move forward with waste. Um, one of the things that I think, uh, is most valuable is that we do have a certain number of towns, like, let's say, ten towns, working together through the Essex facility. Um, if, uh, if if those towns all go in different directions, uh, you're losing, uh, the ability to keep that group together and do, uh, to do other things. Um, and, uh, since, since none of us are experts on, on solid waste or recycling, I think having this guidance would be very valuable. Um, the authorization, uh, before you, um, uh, so I'll, so the resolution, I'll I'll read the resolution. And this is the Connecticut Deep Regional Waste Authority Grant Resolution. And this is, uh, I, Robert McGarry, Secretary of the Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governments, an organization existing under the laws of state of Connecticut, certify that the following are true and complete resolutions, which were adopted at a duly called and held meeting of the governing body, the Lower Connecticut River Valley Council of Governments on July twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, and that such resolutions have not been amended or modified and continue to be full course in effect. So resolve that the organization execute and deliver to the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environment Protection uh, in agreement in the amount of six hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars for a regional waste authority grant. Uh, resolve that Samuel Oskold, as executive director of the organization, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on the behalf of the organization to Connecticut Deep. And to do so, uh, to perform all acts and things that he deems necessary, uh, uh, necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such agreement. Uh, I further certify that Samuel Oskold now holds the position of executive director and that he has held. Uh, I further certify the same as gold and that holds the position of executive director and that he has held that office since December eighth, two thousand fourteen. So that's the resolution that they're required, that Deep is requiring. We are still working on the scope of work with Deep. Um, we, 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 I think we're pretty much there, uh, with the scope. And what we did was we wanted to make sure that, uh, that, that the questions that, um, that Norm. Uh, has with the, uh, the, the MIRA facility in Essex and his, uh, independent negotiations with Deep. Um, that could, that can continue on, on, on that timeline. And the phase regarding that facility, you know, can happen at the same time or later, uh, in the study. But, but the other components, which is understanding what the benefits of setting up our own or joining someone else's, uh, regional waste authority. That won't be held up any further. Um, that can, that can move forward. And, and then once we have recommendations and the towns are interested in going a certain direction. We'll then pull the trigger on the legal work to start creating, um, the, the ordinances and the, and the, and the legal paperwork. To establish a new regional waste authority or modify an existing regional waste authorities documents to accommodate new towns. So, so, um, so it's really, so that's, so that's really the order of things that we're pursuing. Um, and, uh, and, and Antonio, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the resolution.
Take a motion to approve the resolution.
To approve.
Motion and, uh, second, any further discussion on the resolution?
I see, I have a question. Um, doing this study, how long? Estimate would it take sort of to kind of get a sense of how? The process would take, cause I know we're working kind of under a deadline with mirror dissolution and, you know. Running into the very last second always scares me.
Yeah, no, um, and it, it also concerned our executive committee. So, uh, we, uh, uh, we're, we're trying to move this as, uh, get this moving. Um, specifically on the, uh, regional waste authority portion of it. Um, our plan is to have an RFP ready, um, uh, we're, uh, for the day that we have that signed contract. Uh, well, well, we're gonna put the RFP out before we get the signed contract back from deep because we're, we're concerned about how long that will take. But, but hopefully, but, uh, hopefully we will be well into consultant selection by we get, by the time we get, um. Get that signed contract and we can start this, um, in the fall, uh, and hopefully have some answers because. I, I don't, I don't think it's gonna be that complicated of a question necessarily. But we just need some experts to provide guidance here and make some recommendations. Um, and, and to also, you know, we have towns that currently send ways to MIRA like your town and Killingworth. We have towns who don't, um, in the northern part of the region. Um, we, we need to understand what benefits creating a new regional waste authority would provide, um, provide a Middletown. Which already actually has a regional, already has a waste authority or Cromwell. So, um, so there's a couple of things like, you know, you know, keeping the towns that currently go to the Essex MIRA facility together. But also what could it serve? How could it serve the interests of other towns who don't currently, um, go to that facility?
Might even include, um, other towns outside of our region?
Yeah.
We, we'll see.
Yeah, there's a couple of towns, I think, I think, uh, Madison, Guilford, May, uh, have to be sending ways to Essex. So, uh, we would be reaching out to those, uh, those first selectmen as well, um, uh, i- if there was interest.
Okay, thank you.
Eric, you all set? Okay, any other questions? Okay, see none? All in favor of approving the resolution, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, thank you, Sam. Uh, household, uh, waste hazardous?
Janice? Good morning, everybody. Hi. Um, this past weekend, we had our hazardous waste collection in Cromwell. It all went well, um, busy day, quite a bit of traffic, uh, but pretty, pretty, um. Similar to the participants that we had last year, the number of participants, so, um, not a large number of extras. Um. We did, um, have some additional help at our collection. In that Cromwell has sent a, um, transfer station employees to come and help with the collection to understand what was happening. And it's really great to have them do that. Uh, any questions then were answered. They understood what the whole program was about. So I kind of recommend that any other town would do the same. It was really good to have them to understand that. Um, coming up, we have Deep River in August on the seventeenth. And I am in the process of turning over. Uh, the, the shed, all the different buildings to Essex at the old hazardous waste facility, working on that. And the only other thing having to do with waste is we continue to work on the grant. Federal grant to convert food waste to propane. It's a study. Um, work on that application.
Thanks, Janice. Any questions for Janice on, uh, on, uh, the, uh, household waste? Okay, um, Janice, uh, Basic Needs Task Force?
All right, um, not a lot going on there. We did have a, an event at Lenny and Joe's in Madison. Where all weekend, uh, any kind of proceeds for the carousel went towards struggling Basic Needs Task Force. Um, that was very nice of them to do that. Uh, there's gonna be a picnic in August for all the volunteers having to do with struggling Basic Needs Task Force. And that's the report for them.
Any questions on the, uh, basic needs? Thank you very much, Janice. Is, uh, Margot with us?
Um, oh, well, there's, there is, uh, there's update on the regional, uh, um, I, the Regional Agricultural Council.
Other council.
Yeah, and I have something to add to that about the.
Oh, I'm sorry, Agricultural Council, Janice.
That's okay, yeah, um. Our no-till equipment is now in the hands of RC and D and they continue to, uh, work with the whole state on getting. Uh, equipment sharing programs going. There's continued to buy things. Uh, it's moving forward. All is going good.
And I have something to add under that.
Yeah, go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, yesterday I got an email from Betsy Guerra from COST. And, uh, the state is looking for participants to be involved in a task force to, this, this is the official title. Task force to prevent the occurrence of certain undesired interactions between roaming swine and bovines. And, um, I, so I guess, I guess this was passed in a bill this past session. Um, and, uh, and I told her that we do have, uh, a regional agricultural council. We also have a far, a farmer on our board, John Hall. Um, uh, it was Betsy's looking for, uh, you know, for participants if they're interested in this issue. Um, uh, Betsy lives in Durham, said that, um, Durham, uh, town Durham often has roaming cows. Um, I, 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 so I've, I've heard of this come up. I don't really know this, that much of, too much about the origins of this. Um, but, uh, but I, but I think there was an article, uh, from the town of Sterling. Um, and how, um, uh, yeah, town Sterling's, uh, sues farm owner for roaming pigs and damage that they caused to cattle. Um, so I, this somehow became a task force. If any of you know of anyone who might be interested in this issue. Um, uh, please, uh, send me their name or contact info. Um. Uh, you know, we're, we're getting to town, uh, uh, town fair season. So, you know, you wanna make sure you have your protocols to keeping your, your pigs and cows separate, I guess.
Um, hey Irene, can you enlighten us to what the legislature was thinking?
Um, honestly, I'll be, I'll be perfectly honest. I have, I don't remember this. I do remember talking about it because. We actually have a pig sanctuary in East Haddon and there are more than, you know, weeks that go by that there's a roaming pig or a roaming cow. Um, I haven't heard any altercations with said pigs and said cows that are out roaming. Um, but, um, I certainly know that there's plenty of people here in East Haddon to be, um, you could tap into for, uh, bovine or. Whatever the word is for pigs. Um, yeah, we could certainly lend you some expertise.
Yeah, so there, there is a court case going on, uh, uh, in Superior Court in Wyndham over a farm with. Uh, herds of, uh, pigs and cattle, uh, damaging, uh, property and not being properly, um, corralled. But, uh, yeah, it's, uh, and so somehow this became a state task force. Um. And, uh, yeah, so if any of you have any, know anyone or have any interest in the issues of. Keeping your, your, your livestock, uh, herded, uh, Janice?
Yes, we do have also in our region, the DART team, the Durham Agri, uh, Animal Rescue Team. Um, if there is a situation that, um, they would be called to help out and corral the critters.
I'm sure this has to do it more, uh, about, uh, the pigs becoming, uh. Fertile or wild and do damage to crops and stuff like other states. But if anybody has anyone that's interested in serving on the task force representing cog, uh, get ahold of Sam and, uh. And, uh, depending on how many we get, we'll pass it on to Betsy.
And I, and I think having the information about the, the dart for animals, I remember Dave LaVassar, you might remember from OPM. Previously OPM, he was a first selectman of Killingworth. Uh, he, uh, he told, he once told me a story when he was first selectman, how he had to, you know, corral, um, uh, some loose cattle. So.
I believe that, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so.
Best part of the job, Sam. Okay, all right, now is Margot with us?
No, but she left the, oh, you are here.
Yes, I'm sorry, I, I can, um, I'm, I'm in my car, but I can, I can do this. Um. Let's see, good morning, everybody. Um, had the aquatic invasive species update. And that is the Army Corps, uh, did their first treatment for the pilot project at Kiny Cove yesterday. And then today they should be doing Portland Boat Works, but it will depend on, um, on how this rain, um, moves in. So we'll see, hopefully it moves out in time for them to, to treat. They begin at, uh, when the tide turns from low to high. Um, so, um, I'm hoping to get some pictures of that today. And then I have the.
Any questions on, uh, invasive species? Okay, land trust, uh, Margot?
Okay, um, we met with the National Park Service yesterday for our first planning meeting for the update of the strategic conservation plan. Um, Eliza has sent out information regarding the project. Um, and, um, more updates will be sent. Um, meetings are tentatively being scheduled for the third Thursday, September, November, January, March. Um, if you do not already have a representative on the board of the land trust or one already chosen and would like to participate. Um, please let Eliza know. Um, and one caveat is that representatives must commit to participating in all four meetings. Um, and then the summer meeting, um, we have coming up on August fifteenth with Hank Gruner, the herpetologist. Um, the presentation will provide a brief overview of vernal pools and their ecological context within forest ecosystems. And we'll focus on the importance of considering multiple landscape scales for their conservation under climate change scenarios. The critical roles of land trusts, municipal commissions and landowners for the stewardship of these natural resources will also be addressed. So as I said, it's, uh, Thursday, August fifteenth, um, dinner will be served at five thirty. It's a hybrid meeting. Um, there's gonna be a quick business meeting and the presentation starts at six. Um, and please, if you will be coming to the office, um, and especially if you're having dinner, um, please let Eliza know by August ninth. Um, so that we can plan the food about, with that. And that's it.
Thanks, Margot. Any questions on the land trust? Thank you very much. Uh, Suzie?
I, I do have one general question about the land trust and it's also ties into invasive species. Um. When does a species become invasive? I, I guess that's a more generalized question. I know, like, we can have the examples of water chestnut and hydrilla, but like. If you have like the eastern cotton tail, if it's, if that rabbit population spreads across the east. And this can be, you know, an email maybe later, but I'm just curious what? Kind of where is that dividing line, if there is one?
Margot?
Um, yeah, well, I, I would say that a species becomes, um, invasive when it starts. Um, replacing the, the, the value of the native plants in the region and starts, it starts hampering their ability to. Um, to provide food for the wildlife that's here or, um. Uh, affects public health concerns like with hydrilla and, um, water chestnut. It, um, affects other things like, um, our blood control. Um, so I'm most, um, familiar with aquatic invasives. But when it really starts affecting people and, um, and wildlife, native wildlife. Um, then I think that is when it, you could say it's becoming an invasive that we need to seriously consider how to mitigate and control. There are some plants that, you know, might be able to be, uh, lived with. Because even though they are not native and, um, are probably more prolific than we would like them to be. We can, uh, you know, our natural systems can, uh, adapt and, and in some ways, um. You know, uh, live with them. But there are other species like the hydrilla and the water chestnut. That just take over and really alter our natural systems and are very, um, high up on the public health concern.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Margaret. Any other questions? Okay, uh, moving along, Suzie, uh, Economic Development Committee?
Good morning, everyone. Um, the Economic Development Committee has been meeting for about six months now. And we have some, uh, most, uh, representatives from towns and from our, um, major. Um, industries in the region. And it's been going pretty well. We're learning right now just about the, um, economic, um. The, the economy in the region and the drivers of that economy. And, uh, we'll be meeting in August with the leadership to consider what we're doing in the next six months. And we're looking forward to really implementing the sets. That's all we have for the Economic Development Committee.
Any questions on, uh, economic development? Okay, moving on, uh, a DEMIS budget request, Suzie?
Good morning, you, again, you have all received a couple of letters, um, that I drafted. They were sent by email yesterday. One is related, the first one that I'm gonna review is related to, um, funding. And I want to give you just a brief overview. I have a quick presentation of about seven slides. That'll explain what, um, our role as River Cog is as the fiduciary agent to, um, DEMIS Region Two. And I'm gonna share my screen. Hopefully you can see this. Um, so the River Cog inherited the service to Connecticut Region Two Emergency Management Planning Team. Um, in twenty thirteen. And before that, our predecessor agency had these services since at least two thousand nine. And it probably goes further than that, but that was the earliest record I could find of budgeting. Our role is as fiduciary agent. And, um, these are the, um, River Cog towns that are part of Region Two. There are five regions in Connecticut that are DEMIS regions that serve the, 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 uh, regional economic, or regional emergency management teams, the reps. And we are in part of our town, ten of our towns are in Region Two. And the other twenty towns in Region Two are outside of the River Cog region. I'm gonna show you a map of those regions. So these are the five regions. You can see that there's an overlay of the River Cog region in the middle of the map. And, um, some of our members, ten of our members are in Region Two and the remaining are split between Region Three and Region Four. And the rep teams are responsible for, um, receiving grants. And the fiduciary for the reps is responsible for making sure that any purchases of equipment or training. With those grant funds is done appropriately and we're keeping records of everything. And we do a lot of reporting to the state DEMIS office. Um, and for those services. And for those services, we are paid. And you can see from this slide that since twenty sixteen. The River Cog has received seventy thousand dollars in fees for providing these services. And that hasn't changed over the past eight years. What has become a concern working with Paula over the last year is that the, the costs. Of providing these services has really increased. You can see over the last four years. Since fiscal year twenty one, our costs have been well above that seventy thousand dollar fee to provide these services. This year that we, our costs really came down to almost seventy one thousand dollars. But I do anticipate that we're going to, because of the deliverables that I was not able to address last year. That we're, we will be, we will be spending a lot more time, at least probably two thousand dollars worth of more time. On the deliverables this year than I did last year. And just to give you an idea of how we are relative to the other fiduciary agents. That serve the other regions, we are the highest. Paid. And, but these other regions, the fiduciary agents, they don't track their hours. So they don't really know what their true costs are. And they are in most cases just absorbing the, the overhead and. The additional costs of providing those services as River Cog has over the past. Four years anyway. And I'm presenting this to you today because I want you to make a decision about whether or not you want to. Request more funding in the coming year. The rep will be meeting in August to determine its budget. Last year I did mention to the rep that the cost of providing these fees has, or services has gone up quite a bit. And requested an additional twenty five hundred dollars. That was shot down. So I thought I'd take it, make it, go through a different process this year and take it to you to see if this is important enough to you. To request more funding this year. And I have written, drafted that letter which requests an additional five thousand dollars, which I think should cover our. Our services over the next year for providing these services. Does anyone have any questions at this point?
Are the, Suzie, are the funds non-lapsing? I mean, in other words, do we get paid our seventy and we hold on to it? If for some reason we didn't spend seventy?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay.
Paula's not here, but I don't believe we give the money back to, oh, well, actually, no, I'm gonna take that back. We are paid based on deliverables. And the deliverables. What's that?
I think we have to use it.
We probably do receive it because it's based, we're paid based on deliverables and if we're providing all of those deliverables. There's a monetary amount related to those deliverables. And if those are provided, then we are paid. What isn't included in the deliverables is something that really relates to the time that we're spending. There are all various items, including packaging up minutes and sending that to the Demis Office. And some of those deliverables, I think, don't necessarily even relate to fiduciary responsibilities. Which would bring me to my next letter. But my question for you all is, is. Spending an additional twenty five hundred dollars of your dues or five thousand dollars of your dues. Worth it to you to provide these services to the rep? And I will, before I, I hand this over to you for a decision. I want to say that I've always respected very much our first responders. After working with them over the past year plus. I'm really, really appreciating the amount of time and effort and planning that goes into. Not only providing these services, but being prepared for an emergency situation. So that being said, I'll answer any other questions and ask if you want to submit a letter requesting additional. Fees this year, or if you would like to just go with the status quo.
Any further questions for Suzie? If not, I'll take a motion to. Request the additional fees and authorize the chair. To send the letter.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Second, any further discussion?
So just briefly, how does letter A? Get impacted by letter B?
So letter B is, so in reviewing the deliverables over the past year. I've finally gotten my feet under me a little bit and I'm understanding more about the services we provide. And I think over the course of the past twenty years or so that this grant has been around. That a lot of these deliverables were put on the fiduciary agent, maybe because there wasn't a management function. Or a coordinator at the state level. And some of these deliver, some of the deliverables have changed over the years and they've been reduced to reduce the tasks for fiduciary agents. And I identified the three that are in letter B. Because I don't believe that they really relate to fiduciary responsibilities. And I'd like to request of the Demis Office that they review them and consider removing them from the deliverables list.
Right, okay, but the main question was, are those deliverables for which we get paid? In other words, they would reduce that seventy thousand? And so we're sort of at cross purposes here or?
It would be more in line that they reduce those deliverables and the ta, the services that we're providing. We still get the seventy or seventy five thousand dollars, but we're covering our costs for the other deliverables that we're doing. The three deliverables that I identified have not been done over the past two or three years, which means I need to catch up with them. This year. And I owe them to the Demis Office. So if we're able to reduce the number of deliverables, we reduce the number of time that we're putting into the services for Demis. But we don't have to reduce the, the fees that we're receiving and that would, well, that would be my hope. But in the future, if we could become more efficient. Then I would love to be able to reduce our fees to the rep. Because in reducing our fees, then they're able to put more funds into equipment and training. And there's no contract that I can find between River Cog and the Demis Office. Except for these annual grants, which account, become contracts. And annually, there hasn't been a request for fees from what I can see since. At least, you know, twenty sixteen. So I'm thinking every year, these, these numbers should be reviewed and the River Cog should determine whether or not you want to go with the status quo. Increase your fees and continue to provide these services.
I, I, yeah, it does, it's probably a budget discussion that we need to have as well with them, but I think that. You know, you got a motion on the floor, Tony, I think we go ahead with sending that first letter and frankly, I think the second one as well, but.
Suzie, what's our chances of them increasing?
So that's a good question, I was wondering about that, I think we have a pretty good chance of them increasing. If the request is coming from the River Cog Board as opposed to just me asking and telling them that our costs have increased. I think we have a pretty good chance, I proposed a twenty five hundred dollar increase last year. It was eventually rejected, but by the time we got to the end of the conversation, there was at least one person on the call saying. Let's just give them the twenty five hundred dollars because it's hard to find a fiduciary agent. And the costs have not changed over the course of the past eight years. In the case that they do reject an increase. Then, you know, where, where does the River Cog Board stand on how to respond to that?
I guess at that time we'll discuss it.
And Tony?
Yeah, Sam.
And, and it just, just to reiterate a point. We're the fiduciary for Demis Region Two, which is, which is ten of our towns, all of the South Central Region. And a portion of the Nocturne Valley Region. And then we have towns, then we have towns, Lime and Old Lime are in Demis Region Four. And then we have the northern towns, Cromwell, Middletown, they're in Demis Region Three. And so when we do more work than Demis pays us. That, that money gets covered out of, out of the dues pot, which is dues from all seventeen. And so it's really, it's really not fair to have Demis not care, pull its own weight. And, and we, we've made this argument to the other cogs who host and they, they really. You know, they, they, they haven't, you know, they, they are not tracking it as closely as we are. We're closing it, we're tracking every hour we spend on Demis, so we know that, that the subsidy is going on. And, and so I think that's, I think that needs to be. I think that point needs to be made to Demis is that, if, if. If, if, and to the rep, if we don't get paid for our costs, you're asking for a subsidy from towns who are not even in Demis Region Two.
You're correct. Okay, we have a motion on the floor, that's for letter one, to ask for a five thousand dollar increase. At this time, I will ask all those that are in favor of the request, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Suzie, you want to explain letter two, please?
Letter two is, is related to the deliverables, there are fifteen to fifteen deliverables required every year. Most of them do relate to fiduciary responsibilities. And Paula, Janice, and I are all working in on these services. The three that I've outlined in the letter, because the fiduciary has no management control or authority over making decisions. And we have no qualifications, as far as I know, for determining what best practices are. For emergency management or in, we're not involved in any of the training or the interoperable communications. And we really can't judge whether or not the soft target. Purchases are. Or whether or not they were worth the, the money. So for the, to insert the fiduciary agent into these deliverables, it's just inserting, in my view, a third party into it. It's using our time to create a presentation and coordinate a presentation. And it's, we're like a third wheel in here trying to learn some things and wouldn't even be able to give the presentation to begin with. The idea, I guess, is for us to serve as an administrative assistant and put the presentation together and coordinate it. Demis Region Two does have a coordinator at the state level. And I don't know what, that's Nicole, and she has come to our, our meetings before. And, you know, it seemed to me that this might be a better, she might be in a better position to provide this, but it hasn't been her role in the past. And it's been placed on the fiduciary agents, but I don't see a reason why we couldn't request. Because it doesn't really relate to fiduciary responsibilities. I don't see any reason not to request that these deliverables be reviewed and considered for removal from the deliverables list.
Okay, thanks, Suzie. I will take a motion to support letter two. And to authorize the chair to sign it, asking for the removal of the three items identified by staff. Dave, second. Did we get a second?
I'll second.
Oh, Carol, I'm sorry, Carol. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much, Suzie, appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Chairman and Executive Directors, reports, you got anything to add, Sam?
Sure, I'll give you the financial report. All right, as of June thirtieth, the council has completed fiscal year twenty twenty four. And overall spending is within the parameters of the adopted two point, two million eight, eight hundred ninety-three thousand, two hundred and forty-five thousand, a dollar budget. The council exceeded the emissary budget for supplies and food by eight hundred seventy-five dollars for Torrance's party last summer. Equipment also was exceeded, that budget item for equipment was exceeded by twelve hundred dollars for purchasing a new laptop. For, for a new part-time worker. These overages were covered by other line items under the, that were under budget. Projections are, are to close, projections for the close of the fiscal year. Show us in the black with an increase going to the fund balance, that's Paula's projection right now. As of June thirtieth, our stiff account totaled one million two hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred and six dollars. And our liberty checking account balance was thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars. Let's see. Uh, other things under my report, there's been some interesting drama. Over at OPM regarding the fair share housing study that the, that the state. Passed, passed a special act last year to direct. OPM to conduct this fair share housing study. The study was supposed to come up with a methodology for, for. For building a hundred and forty thousand new housing units for the hundred and forty thousand house, housing burdened households in the state. The one solution identified by the General Assembly is that when, when people are struggling to pay their rent. That we just need to build them new, new housing units in the suburban rural towns. The OPM had announced that they were having a steering committee for that. It seemingly was stacked with, with advocates. And then at the last minute, the, the plug was pulled on that and now they're not having a steering committee. And the guidance we're telling, being told from OPM is that we'll get a chance to comment on this. Once it goes to public hearing at the General Assembly next session. Overall, we are going to pursue efforts to publicize with OPM and their consultant. Educate them on the work that our regional housing committee is doing. Megan and Eliza are working with that committee that create our own methodology to understand what our housing needs are in our region. And, and unlike what's going, what was proposed by OPM by the steering committee, which then was pulled. Our housing committee has, has members of planning and zoning commissions. So the people are actually entrusted with actually creating the regulations and implementing policy through those land use regulations are actually on our committee. And we hope to educate the state about our efforts. And, and our work to look at methodologies used by other states, you look at the best practices. And come up with realistic understanding of what housing we need in our region. And instead of, and doing it from a more bottoms up approach as opposed to imposing a statewide methodology. It has no, seemingly no transparency and no public involvement.
Thanks, Sam, any questions for Sam? Hey, Rob, are you still with us?
I think Rob Hermit is still with us.
Yes, yeah.
Quick, quick question, any information you could share with us on the light removals on Route Nine?
No, I have not heard anything in a few months, actually, so, no, I haven't heard.
With that, I have nothing to add. Does anybody have anything for the good of the council? Seeing none, I want to remind everyone, we will not be meeting in August. And we will meet again in September, so with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Motion to adjourn, Dave, second. All in favor, aye, everybody enjoy the remainder of the summer and we will see you in September. Stay safe, everyone, have a great summer.
Thank you.
Thank you.